Sorry. Start with our pledge.
Remember, I was sorry.
My pledge, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I see your motion to approve the agenda is set in. It's on blue. Motion to the pledge, second of all, all in favor. Set it over. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda? Need to abstain from anything, please do so. Any questions or about anything, go ahead and. Letter written if you have any questions.
I'll move to the committee.
Motion made by both. Second, second by Diggs, all in favor?
I got abstained from forty-seven, oh four five and forty-seven, oh eight, no, in the West Conference.
All in favor. Set it over. Moving on, we got the recognition of our holiday card.
And you have that card sitting in front of you. Snowman with joy.
And Bill Yost in fourth grade. Leslie and I were down there presenting her with the appreciation of the work of my heart.
Everybody seen it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's cool.
Yes, pretty neat.
See, that a boy, see?
It's John. I guess she wanted a snow day.
Perfect. Next up, we're going to get into the program evaluation of Ms. Bortz, Ms. Twitter.
You brought our chapter that has come along with us, this is Sarah Guim, this is private.
Thursday, Sarah.
So throughout this year, we have had a lot of FFA members. There's over a hundred members who are dues paid in high school and nearly fifty in the middle school. And we had a lot of kids attend state convention and various contests, state degrees, proficiency awards, and some kids in Missouri State FFA choir. And throughout the year, we had kids attend National Convention, FFA Camp, Leadership Camp, the Top Thirty Trip, and the State Agro Science Fair, as well as showing stuff at the county fair and state fair. I don't know if you all have our handout or not. Right now, we're sitting at two hundred and four in the high school as far as our agit program numbers, and that's about a hundred fifty-two unduplicated. So we do have a lot of kids who are taking multiple classes. And eighty-four middle schoolers between the seventh and eighth grade. Our high school class numbers have all stayed pretty consistent. I think our smallest class right now is my animal science class with nine kids in it, which actually is a jump up from last year of how many kids were in that class. Anything on the numbers for you as far as? Okay, FFA, we've got forty-two members in seventh through eighth grade, and then a hundred fifty-two in the high school side of it. And then we also have twenty-six kids who are graduates who are working towards their American degrees. And we're going to start on those pretty soon with some of those. So it's been pretty steady for the past couple of years. Program curriculum changes that we've done. Want to talk about food science?
Some of the food sciences are probably our highest growing junior and senior level class. And I appreciate you guys getting us our kitchenette and everything in there. The stove's helped out a lot this semester. It's enabled us to do some things like food preservation. We did some canning, made some bacon, did some pickling, those sort of things. And we were also able to do some basics of kitchen safety, how to use a knife, how to convert measurements from metric to imperial, how many quarts are in a gallon, that sort of stuff. And ag construction. Last year, I reported that we didn't have a lot going on because price materials were really high. Price materials are still really high, except we have a, we have a ton going on out there. First semester, I did a little different this year. Everybody built the same project. So we did planter benches, cornhole boards, and bell rings. You've probably seen on Facebook some of that stuff. Those people who've bought things or know people who've bought things, tell them thank you. It's been nice having every kid build the exact same thing because they can kind of help each other a little bit, which is a nice thing. Your changes that you've had?
Seventh grade is now a full-year class. So I get to see my wonderful seventh graders every day. Some days, it's a pleasure, some days, they're junior high kids. Conservation, it, last year, it was a full class, full-year class. This year, it's now conservation first semester and then biotechnology, which I think fits a little bit better versus the ag leadership to biotechnology. Gets it more of like a natural science. And then hopefully, that'll lead me to having more kids participate in the State Agro Science Fair in the spring. As far as our successful events, we had twenty-eight kids that took their TSAs in February. Seventeen of those met the proficient status. We've been continuing our landscaping. Ms. Pettigrew has some landscaping for us in front of the elementary this year, so we're going to knock that out here pretty quick.
Some of our kids have, we took a tour of, Wensville put in, it's a sign and stricker school, so it's just a sign and stricker. So if you know anything about John Deere, you have to go through a John Deere training program specific to John Deere. And sign and strickers trying to cut out the, the middleman of, I guess, Lind Tech or Fort Scott, Kansas, in order to train their employees. And the difference is, if you take, if you go to school for them at Wensville, at their school, they provide housing and they pay you fifteen dollars an hour while you're there on top of your tuition. And they give you, I want to say the tool package was forty-five hundred dollars worth of tools. Everything you would need to start up as a, everything you would need to start up as a mechanic with them. And there, you have to sign on for eighteen months, I believe, is, I'll have to look at my notes, eighteen months. So I took some kids up there with the help of Garrett Updrew. He kind of scheduled that, that was a really interesting program. Downside to it is, is it's not an accredited school. They don't leave with an associate's degree. They, they leave with a certificate to work for any, any sign and stricker they want to in state Missouri and now a little bit of Eastern Illinois. We also will take some kids on the twenty-six down in Missouri, part of MWI, to compete in their welding contest. If they compete in that contest, they're automatically, they're automatically given a thousand dollar scholarship. The only drawback is they have to be a senior to compete in it. So if you're a junior in my ag construction class, you can go next year. I'm only taking Garrett Swearingen and Evan Rex because those were the only two that were interested in doing that. We did some work on the football field this spring. And then Ms. Bortz had a lot of success, had a couple of state winners with her agro science from biotechnology last year. As far as our FFA successful events, the Grasslands team this fall placed the highest at any Grasslands team from Tipton had done. They ended up placing tenth. Ms. Guim, you want to talk about your, how state falls speaking one?
Yeah. Last year, I placed second place in state in the soil and water conservation division. And this year, I'm competing in the forest products division, and I compete at state for that on January tenth.
Which is pretty cool. She's very cool. Kind of said she's going to be a senior, graduating out of the program.
Way better than I am. Go ahead, Ms. Bortz.
Let's see, last year, state convention in April, we had five kids get their state degree. We had one area proficiency winner. Harley team placed sixth in the state. Sarah, again, because she's really good, placed sixth in the state. Meets evaluation team, fifth in the state. And our floriculture knowledge creed also competed. And then we had three state choir participants, like Sarah said earlier. New this year, we, Tipton's never had kids go to the Agro Science Fair at the state level for FFA. And thankfully, this woman does a great job with a lot of kids that do science fair kind of stuff. So some of our kids had that really good background, and I said, hey, let's kind of use that in our FFA program. Evan Cooten Cooler and Cadence Kemper got first in the state, which I was like, never seen these kids in official dress before. Abby Hunsberger also placed first in state. Those kids had the opportunity to move on to nationals if they wanted to. Two of those kids being seniors, they said, not really what we're planning on doing right now, but they would have had that opportunity if they had wanted to. And then Kerrigan Keckner got third place in state. National convention, we had three kids just this past November get their American degree. Over the summer, seventeen kids, we took to a leadership camp. Some of them went home a little bit early because they couldn't take the heat. But we got them down there, they got a little exposure to some leadership.
As far as fundraising this year, we did, we had a few more people at our barbecue than we had last year, which is a nice thing. I'll attribute a lot of that to the TRA, having their, their football, whenever all the schools come together, youth football, that was the same day. And I know Mr. Wolf was like, really worried that he'd upset us by having that on the same day. I was like, no, let us know when you're doing it next year because we'll do ours. It worked well, worked really well. And I still haven't gotten my invoice yet from the place that we order. I've gotten most of our invoices in, but not for like the side dishes and stuff. But I'm estimating about seven thousand in profit on the barbecue with the raffle and everything this year. The raffle was a big hit, and we're hoping to continue that next year. Fruit sales, what did, what did we think we made on profit on fruit this year?
I think it was about four thousand.
Yeah, so we're up a little bit on fundraising, which is nice. And then the, we're, we're thinking next year on fundraising because on the fruit sales, our profit margin every year keeps getting smaller and smaller on fruit. Markup keeps going up on it. And then we've also been kind of getting some complaints about the quality of the fruit a little bit. So we're thinking about maybe simplifying and seeing if we can find a local wholesaler and maybe do like, having the kids in the floral design class make the fruit basket arrangements and bringing back the salted peanuts because everybody really liked the peanuts and the shell. That's what, and just keeping it to one list. We feel like the seven-page brochure is just a little bit much. But we're still thinking about it, and we need to talk to our officers a little bit. Last year's Top Thirty Trip, we went out to Yellowstone, had a really, really good time. And we didn't, we had zero bus incidents. Nice thing to, I wasn't sure if we had the bus incidents, but I've heard a lot about it.
Oh, yeah.
Fairs. They, we got home, they got home. Fairs, we had twenty-six different students exhibiting at Montotaw County Fair and fourteen at state fair. Doesn't have anything to do with us, but Carson and Carter Petrie got granted a reserve grant through their FFA, are their four age projects at, with their hands. And I mean, Garrett pretty well handles that for them. But something, I don't think we've ever seen a brother or sister win the show at the state fair, which is pretty cool. And then Carson had some success recruiting dough on her, on her Borgo show. You want to talk new events too? Or do you want to get in?
I'll let you talk about the cornhole and Valentine's Day, since those are kind of your.
New event, cornhole tournament this year. We're, we've got a possibility of fifteen kids wanting to go to WLC that I estimate probably about seven actually end up wanting to go by the time it comes around. WLC is, in my opinion, the best thing FFA does. It's in Washington DC. They tour all the monuments and memorials. They meet, used to be Senator Blunt and Senator, or Representative Luke Damar, but now it'll be, was it Eric Schmidt, Ryan, he'd be our senator. And I can't remember the name. Who is it?
Ollie.
That sounds right, yeah. They get to meet those people, get a capital tour. They come back with what's called a Living to Serve Grant and, or Living to Serve Plan, where it's basically their own personal community service project. It's a pretty cool thing. It's really the reason why I came back into education is I miss taking kids to that. But it is expensive, just like anything. We're planning on driving. The kids, we es, I'm estimating will need to raise about twelve hundred dollars in order to pay for their week out there. So we're doing some little fundraiser type things. First one's the cornhole tournament. Costs ten bucks a team, that's five bucks a person, and it'll be in the ag shop. It's on January the eleventh at six o'clock. We'll also have a concession stand consisting of hot dogs and chili, or you can combine them together and make yourself a chili dog if you're feeling froggy. Oh, and the winter, and so we can keep as much of that money, we're going to make a, I don't know if you guys remember that nice set of cornhole boards that we auctioned off last year that was made of walnut and had the epoxy inlay and stuff. And that's going to be what the winning team gets is another set of those. The Valentine's Day dinner is going to be on February the thirteenth. The reason it's on that day is my wife almost cut my throat out last year when I did it on regular Valentine's Day. So it's going to be on the thirteenth, which is also a Monday. We try to keep it on Monday because a lot of restaurants are closed on Mondays. So we think it helps draw people in. If you went to the Valentine's Day dinner last year, I was really happy with it, it was really good. We're not going to do the smoked pork loin this year, or the stuffed smoked pork loin. We're just going to do straight ribeyes. That'll be a, probably an eight ounce ribeye with baked potato, salad, dessert. Tickets will, again, will be probably twenty-five bucks or fifty for the couple. And I'm hoping I can get chocolate covered strawberries as the dessert. Do you want me to go on to the next ones?
Yeah.
In the past, we've done an LDE, which is a leadership development contest. That brings in about a hundred fifty kids. This year, I talked with Ms. Metter and Ms. Bortz and I, and we're looking at doing a CDE. A CDE is what's called a career development event. It's on a much larger scale. You're looking at, we're estimating about a thousand students on campus this year. So we obviously can't do that right after school. So we're looking at doing it on the twenty-fourth of March, which is the day after showcase. Where no, none of the teachers are here. We're not having to utilize anybody's classrooms the way we've got it planned out. The Knights of Columbus Hall have been contacted so we can use their building as well as the Sportsman's Club. So we'll have four buses, but you get teachers from other schools that have their license to drive to it. And you get teachers from other schools to help facilitate that. The, the hope behind that is, is that pays for all of our contest registration and all of our testing, for our TSA testing throughout the rest of the year. So that's about three thousand dollars in money that the FFA chapter recoups. And then the concession stand is going to be ran by the parents of students who are going to WLC so that they can, we can generate a little money there. And then our last WLC fundraiser is going to be our trivia night, which is going to be February twenty-first.
Sounds right.
Twenty-first, it's the Tuesday, but FFA night, Tuesday night trivia. And it is what it sounds like, it's a trivia night if you've been to one of those before. All of these events are open to the public, except for the CDE contest, obviously, because we're trying to use them a little bit as fundraisers. So I got a little long-winded.
No, you're good. As far as future goals for the program, our TSA testing, hoping to get more of our seniors before they graduate out to test in their planned career area, which I think going to that Tipton CDE is going to help a lot because it's a lot easier to get kids to an event that is in Tipton rather than a Saturday morning early on the bus. Also going to continue landscaping from the Circle Drive. Ms. Metter also had some projects for my landscaping class. They got, they're planned out for like the next couple of years. And then three-star chapter rating at national level. Already have Kate and Stockwell's working on our application for that and hoping to get our vice presidents in on it. And then just continuing our success in contests at state level.
It was nice to see three teams and four individuals competing at state. It'd been several years since, or on the stage at state, I would say. It'd been several years since Tipton had that success. And we're hoping to see that, keep getting, keep continuing. I always tell kids, winning's a lot more fun than losing. So it's not that losing's bad, it's just winning's fun. Any questions?
Had your CDE at the Sportsman's Club, we're going to be shooting track.
No, no. Unfortunately, no, they, the one out there will be the forestry contest and the soils contest. So they'll be looking at trees and planting in there. But not looking at trees.
That's the whole thing I hear, that somebody, you're all going to shoot some track.
No. Any other questions?
Good job.
Yeah, very good.
Yes, thank you.
It'll be fun.
It'll be fun.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, I want to see Thor's hammer next time.
We'll see.
Can you hear us okay, Lindsay?
Yes, I can hear you all okay, can you hear me okay?
We got it.
Yep.
Perfect. All right. Okay, so I'm up on the screen there in the office.
You are.
Awesome, and where did your audit report go? All right. Yes, Lindsay Graves, Graves and Associates CPAs, here to present your two thousand and twenty-two audit report. I'm coming from West Elementary this evening. One of my boys has a basketball game here, so appreciate you guys working with me. The first four pages of the audit report are what you have retained us to do, and that is to perform an audit in accordance with professional standards to render an audit, render an opinion rather, on your financial statements. We're coming back to you all with what we refer to as a unmodified opinion. And basically, that's what you want to hear us say, is that nothing came to our attention during the course of the audit that would have rendered any modifications to that opinion. The next section of your audit report are the financial statements. We're required to present your balance sheet and your income statement in two different formats. Jump on down here to your income statement by fund, since that's the way that you are more accustomed to seeing your financial statements. So just a few highlights here, focusing on funds one and funds two, the general fund and the teachers' fund, or the special revenue fund, in your operating. Overall combined revenues for the year were up about sixteen percent compared to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. A lot of that's being driven by the federal stimulus monies. And then since we've had an increase in revenues, our expectations is that we see an increase in expenditures, especially given the CARES money and the requirement to get those funds expended. Overall, expenditures for the year were up about nine percent compared with a year ago. One of the things that we look at to determine the financial health of the district is how many months of operating reserves you have built up in those two funds. So as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, you had approximately five months. And we use a rule of thumb as a firm, the recommendation that organizations such as yourselves have about four to six months. So then in a worst, worst-case scenario, that all of your federal, all of your state, all your local financing would dry up, you could need five months' worth of operating obligations. And then I've provided that calculation over here to the left. I have to get that question, Lindsay, how do you calculate that? The next section of your audit report are the notes to the financial statements. And these go on for quite a few pages. I'm just going to hit on a few highlights here as well. These provide a further narrative of what's going on in the financial statements. The first here, note two, cash and cash equivalents. So state statute requires all of your deposits to be fully insured by FDIC or collateral pledged by the financial institutions in the district's name. And so this is disclosing that you all met that requirement. And the reason that this is written in the state statutes is that if the financial institutions themselves would default, the district would be able to get their deposits back. The next note on the following page, note three, long-term debt, is just disclosing that we paid off another four hundred and ten thousand on our bonds for the year. It provides the repayment schedule. At the bottom here of page seventeen, the total interest expense to finance the bonds for the fiscal year was just over eighty-three thousand. And we did further pay off on a lease purchase, and it provides the interest expense that was incurred to finance that as well. And then note five here, retirement plan. This is disclosing that the district met the requirements with, for four and a half percent required contributions to PSRS and six point eight six percent to Pia, or to peers, excuse me, rather. And that you all met that requirement. Down here, note nine, taxes. So operating in Cooper, Morgan, and Montotaw counties, you all had current and delinquent tax rate collections of a hundred and one, a hundred and two, and ninety-nine percent for those counties. We typically see these collection rates in the ninety-six to ninety-nine percent rate, and so you all are pretty much between that. We will sometimes see these rates go up above a hundred percent, and sometimes we'll see them go below that typical benchmark. And I think as I talked to you guys in the past, it's really dependent on what's going on economically. I like to use the example of the two thousand and eight recession in that we saw delinquencies increase and so collections decrease. And then once economic conditions improved, then those would catch up and we'll see those swing above a hundred percent. So what we're looking for here is that reasonably the district is receiving all of the tax revenues that are owed to them based on the assessed valuation, again, using that benchmark of ninety-six to ninety-nine percent. Note twelve here, tax abatements, and this has been around now for probably about, if I had to guess, five years off the top of my head, is what the effect is to the district if any of the counties that you operate in provide tax abatements to businesses bringing their operations into counties for economic growth, for jobs, job creation, et cetera. And so as of June thirtieth, this, just under forty-five thousand was the discount basically that those businesses received and the effect to the district and the reduction of revenues. And then the last note here, note fourteen, evaluation of subsequent events. So we're performing your audit each year as of June thirtieth, but we're required to review any significant events that occur between that date and the date of our audit report, which was December eighth of this year. And so we're coming back to you all this year. We do have the lease purchase that was entered into for six hundred and fifteen thousand, and then provides the repayment schedule. And then we will start putting that into place, or actually, or already have, for fiscal two thousand and twenty-three. The next section of your audit report is the budgetary comparison schedules. State statute requires you all to go through this process. So this is basically disclosing you met that requirement and that you're going through the original, you're amending the budget throughout the year. You ultimately amended to final, which is common. So that's showing that you all met that requirement. The next section of your audit report is the federal compliance section. So now for two, two years in a row, you all have been, been subject to single audit in being that you spent seven hundred and fifty thousand or more in federal funds. And as this is showing, you spent just over two point five million, so certainly above that seven hundred and fifty requirement. And what this is, and having to do with CARES monies, and what this is, is it's a compliance audit that has to be done on those federal programs in addition to the financial audit. And I'll talk about that more in just a moment. The next section of your audit report is the letter regarding government auditing standards, or what's more commonly referred to in our profession as the yellow book. So DESI and the Single Audit Act require your audit to be performed in accordance with the yellow book. And what it basically is, is it's a higher level of auditing standards in that we have to have certain CDE even to be able to perform these types of audits in the course of a year. Namely, we have to have forty hours of continuing education, et cetera. And so that's disclosing that to you all. And then the next section of your audit report, just like the, the audit, financial audit itself, we have to provide an opinion on the compliance with the single audit or what's technically referred to as the uniform guidance. We're coming back to you all again with an unmodified opinion, as we are with the financial statements. So nothing new or different there. And then finally, very way back here, a summary of auditors' results, I feel is where we're, where we put the, the most clearly type of financial statement, opinion, unmodified, and then the compliance on the federal program also unmodified. And then this year, we audited as a, as a major federal program, the CARES money or the S R under, under eighty-four, four twenty-five. The next page here, we're coming back to you with one finding, nothing different than what we have in recent years. And I think as I talked to you guys before, I would personally like if the profession would come up with a different term and then finding for this particular situation, on the segregation of duties. And just that I think about finding as being, we perform the audit, we find something that's quote being done incorrectly, we write you up about it, you say, here's how we're going to fix it, here's a projected completion date, et cetera. And that's not what the case is here with segregation of duties. And that's not what the case is here with segregation of duties. Just given the size of the district, it's not possible, or it's not reasonable, I should say, to hire additional people just to segregate duties. And in some textbook cases, they can say you have to have as many as six, seven, or eight people involved in a financial transaction in order to fully segregate duties. So nothing came to our attention during the course of the audit, but we do have to bring this to your attention. That errors or omissions could happen just because there's limited amount of people involved. And then here on page thirty-seven, this has been around for probably three or four years, I would say now, that we have to do a corrective action plan if there are any findings. And so we have to repeat that segregation of duties finding here. And goes on your letterhead, and then as we follow here at page thirty-eight, Dr. Robinson signs off on that. And then here, the completion date. Again, if it were something that was truly being done incorrectly, we would say here's our expected completion date or actual completion date of correction. But we are required to say not applicable because we expect that just given the nature of your operations, that that will continue to be a finding. Again, I wish we had a better word for that. The next section of your audit report is the state compliance section. So in addition to the audit of the financial statements and the audit of the federal program compliance, we're required to perform an examination of certain statistics. And DESI requires this of us with public school districts in the state of Missouri. And namely, it's transportation, attendance, and other statistics they deem necessary that we look at. And coming back to you all again this year with no issues or findings here. There are two letters that accompany the audit report. The first is the communication of audit results. So what this is, is that during the course of the audit, we're working with management, we're working with employees, et cetera. But ultimately, as the independent auditors, we report back to you all as the governing body. So this letter can give narrative to things that didn't happen during the course of the year. I don't have anything new or different here this year than I have in recent years, but I'm just going to hit on a couple of highlights as well. The first being at the bottom of the first page of that letter, significant estimates, and that is management's estimate of revenues in the budgetary process. And so we're looking at that and deeming that we determine that those are reasonable. And of course, you all are also looking at those or your fault in the budgetary process and determining that that's reasonable. But we're required to look at that as well. And then also further bring to attention the importance of the FDIC and the pledged collateral on your deposits so that again, if the financial institutions themselves would default, you all would be able to get your deposits back. And then two items, separate but related, difficulties encountered in performing the audit and disagreements with management. I don't have anything here again this year, but I do like to cover this with all of my boards each year. My most common difficulty encountered in performing the audit is significant delay in the auditee responding to us. And unfortunately, that's actually gotten worse in the last two to three years, just where everyone's experiencing turnover and shortage of help, et cetera, that people are just not able to get back with us in as timely of a, as timely of a timeframe. And so again, that's not what happened here, but I do like to cover that. And then disagreements with management. I thankfully only had a few of these in my career, and they're not typically good situations. If management is in significant disagreement with the independent auditor or vice versa, it's typically led us under professional standards to resign from the engagement. So once more, that's not what happened here, but by the nature of the audit cycle, you only hear from us as the independent auditor one time a year, so I like to go over those items. And then again, if anything would happen related to those items that had to be escalated into this letter, we're required under professional standards to reach out to you all as the board ahead of time and say, hey, we're having these issues. And that's typically the president or the treasurer. And then the second letter to the company is the audit report is the management letter. And I don't have anything new or different here. We're just required to repeat that segregation of duties finding one more time, so it goes into the audit report twice, and then one more time here into the management letter. So that is the conclusion of your 2022 audit report. Can I answer any questions?
All good, Lindsay. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you, guys. And I will let you get on with the rest of your evening. And you all take care.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you, my mind.
Well, we looked a little bit about at the money side of things. Now we're going to look at how, you know, there's, there's two sets of bean counters. One's counting money, the other one's looking at who are we as a school academically? And what's going on in our school? So DESI could be your other set of auditors, and they have been trying to figure out exactly what they're going to audit for quite a while. A long time ago, Landfaraway called 2017, Dr. Rob showed up at your doorstep, we came up with a whole new slogan, kind of like Nike, just do it, but it's we build the future, and, and one of the things we say is, but how? So we're going to revisit some things that have happened. It seems like we had a few years that got started, and then we hit a pandemic all of a sudden. Then we started looking at our, our entire operation being disrupted on how we did business normally. So I'm going to speak for about five, and then each of your administrators is going to hit a significant part of some things that we're doing to try to, I would say, recover from the pandemic. This is a new requirement, so what is the mission of Tipton R6 School District? I gave you some key words there, but can anyone say it? Well, we had the, the staff at the beginning of the year just trying to reset some things. And how much did I give that person that, that got it the closest thing?
Twenty bucks.
How much was it?
Twenty.
I gave him twenty bucks, so who could ever come up with it? I think we had, was it Dylan that came up and got the closest to it? So, so the mission of our school district is to prepare students for their future. Notice the time that we build the future, for their future by designing and sustaining a learning culture of excellence. So that, that is our, our mission statement. You notice there's a lot encapsulated in just a few words. And sometimes it's a little hard to remember, but if we're not here to prepare kids, I don't know what we're here for. We're not here to prepare them for their future, not just going to an Ivy League school. What's their future? What's their skills and gifts? And then if we're not always working on designing and sustaining some kind of learning culture, you know, we talk about culture a lot, and that's the way we do things. How do we treat people? What kind of services do we provide? What kind of opportunities do we give kids? And if we're not striving for excellence, I don't know what we're striving for. We're trying to be really good at it. So that kind of encapsulates what our mission is. And if you just want to pare it, pare it all the way down, just say, prepare all students. So one of the umbrellas that we talked a lot about at the beginning, since we're now kind of going through this reset, this idea of professional learning community has been around since the nineties, made a big impression on a lot of people. It's one of those very easy to say, but very hard to practice, very hard to do things. You know, a lot of districts say, we do all that PLC stuff. I don't know exactly what that is, but I kind of go, huh? What do you mean that PLC stuff? So it's very easy to say, very hard in practice to do. But if you compare it down to just these four questions, this is what we want educators in our district to keep in mind because it guides and directs what we do. What do we want students to learn? You're talking curriculum, you're talking Missouri learning standards, you're saying this is what we want to focus on. It's why we brought Build Your Own Curriculum in. It's why we've done a lot of things to try to say, here's what's in this class, here's what's in that class. Here's, we want a strong ag program. And then we say, how do we know students, students learned what we intended? You notice that Ms. Boards and Mr. Twinner tonight, what were they talking about? We want more seniors to do what? Take the technical skills attainment test so they can show that they've learned through their program. We want all seniors to take that. As a matter, maybe we ought to make that mandatory, I don't know. To be an ag, maybe they all be, all be taking it so we know what the results are. So that's just one way that we can measure, you know, did they learn what we intended? Then this piece right here, we've been working a lot on because of something called learning loss. What do we do when students don't learn? And we had some of those unprecedented circumstances that came up of, wow, hey, you got to quarantine for ten days. Hey, there's no school, and it's middle of March, we're not coming back. Hey, can we even have summer school? Oh, now you got to quarantine. No, you've got to quarantine. Oh, you were a close contact. No, you were. Craziness ensued. But we know that a lot of students didn't learn through a lot of that. And we've been uncovering some of that, okay? And then at the end, you know, what do we do to enrich the education of students here in Tipton? What do we do when they learn all this? And then is there something else we do? And I think you can see with the Washington Leadership Conference that the ag kids are going out to with some of the contests, some of those extra things that they get to do, they're going to Yellowstone. We're enriching the education of kids. And so there's a lot of opportunities there as well that we could talk about. But those first three are tough, especially up here. What do we want students to learn? And you have a lot of turnover with staff, new teachers or old teachers going somewhere else or retiring, or when you have that fluctuation that goes on in staff, every time you come in, Miss Madder, what are you doing? You're hiring new people, and then what are they asking you?
What are we teaching?
What am I supposed to teach? You know, what am I supposed to teach in this class? It's why we brought up Build Your Own Curriculum, which is that online piece, and said, this is what's in English one, this is what's in English two, so the teachers don't have to be confused about what their targets are and what they need to focus on. So one of our goals in our old CSEP, Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, I'll throw some acronyms out there, but try to remind you, is that we'll operate as a PLC. We'll try to answer these questions because they all fit into what we need to do as a school system. So for a PLC, the other part of this goal, right before the pandemic hit, we were starting to look at measures to determine academic success. I shouldn't say determining academic success, I cut it off. So what are those measures? Well, in the mix, believe it or not, in the mix, believe it or not, DESI was coming up with measures. They were going into the new Missouri School Improvement Program, high generation number six, iteration number six. So we're always asking if we're, you know, parents, teachers, board members, we're saying, how are we doing? How do we know students are success-ready? That's the new word out there with DESI now. Are students success-ready? They're not using so much the one that says college and career readiness anymore. That used to be the bigger one. College career readiness, college career readiness. Now it's more like workforce ready. They're paring it down to what's success-ready. And so they came up with a lot of measures. This is just one section out of this new, and we're not going to digest the whole thing tonight, just this one section of a few slides. You know, it ties into what we want students to learn and how do we know they're learning what we intended? So they're talking about follow-up data. They're talking about six months after graduation, we do some of this already. Are they productive? Are they work-ready? Are they in the workforce? Are they in college? We heard Mr. Twinner talking a little bit about that kind of thing with Siden Stricker, making that connection, whether it be going to John Deere School, having that kind of thing happen in their life. We're going to start tracking those things more and more. And hopefully, we could, you know, in my mind, we should be making more connections with our local businesses too. You can name a lot of them that have people that want to be hands-on type workers. Trade school, two-year college, the military. All of these things are getting tracked by DESI even more intensely. Completing vocational certifications. What else are they measuring? Well, all the way down to elementary. They want elementary kids to demonstrate regular school attendance because research will tell you if a kid is only there about seventy percent of the time, Miss Pettigrew, what's those outcomes look like for kids that are there seventy percent of the time?
Poor.
Poor, very poor. If they can't get them into school, how many calls does Joanie make a day?
Every person.
Chasing them, chasing them all the time. Because sometimes there, unfortunately, there are situations, home situations, where kids are staying home. So to be on track, they're looking at attendance. What's our school doing about attendance? You've got literacy and numeracy. We've heard this before. We need to talk a little bit more about numeracy. But literacy, for sure, you've heard a lot about that, us shoring up our, our literacy program and actually measuring our kids reading on grade level. So DESI's tracking these things. They're, they're looking to see if we're success-ready. So then the eighth grade, you get up to middle school, they're looking at developing ICAPS, individual career academic plans. So they're actually talking about where that kid's going to be after their senior year. They've got a plan. So they have some career exploration experiences. They want us to build these in. And we have a lot of things like this, you know, having about eighty-plus kids in ag. That's good because ag has a whole lot of different areas to look at, everything from horticulture to meats to you name it. Also, looking at our co-curricular and extracurricular. I'm not really sure how they'll measure that quite yet or how they'll collect that from us. But you know, it all matters, right? What kind of experiences are we giving our kids? At the high school, it gets, it gets a little more serious. This one is, is new. Scoring proficient on at least two end-of-course assessments. You hear that one, Miss Madder? Yeah, we were kind of looking at those today, I sent them out. That's significant because once we start getting a number there and say, well, how many of our kids can actually do that? That's proficient, that's not advanced, that's proficient, which is generally referred to as around a C plus or better, proficient. Then you get to your career technical and student organizations. We have a lot of those. You have progress or academic work on a schedule. So that means I started my freshman year and I ended my senior year on time, so on track to graduate on time, I'm making adequate progress. A lot of things they're graduating, sorry, they're, they're measuring. And you have college and career readiness assessment scores. Those are what you call IRCs. There's a lot of different tests that are out there based on what kind of kid is coming through our, our educational institution. They're finally starting to recognize, hey, everybody's not going to Princeton. Okay, so every kid has something they're passionate about, and they, they want them to show up or register in some way that says, hey, these kids are prepared. Whatever they're going after, what prepared them for their future? Remember our mission statement? Iraq, it all fits. So a lot of assessment scores that they can get into. Then these are kind of new, registered youth apprenticeships. I'm actually going to have to look to see what those would be. I'm wondering if we can start some here. I know I've been out with Emred, and they've been trying to get some of these apprenticeships started. I'll bet some of them actually qualify and actually having those places where, you know, what if Kyle Lineman, I know it's a different company, they got bought out, but what if they actually had an apprenticeship program right here in town, which kids could be involved in that? Now, sometimes there's some age restrictions depending on the kind of work. But they're looking at something beyond college. They're recognizing we need people who are not just going away for four or five years to college. They're actually going into a trade of some sort. A lot of transition services, bulk rehab. Nancy does some work there with some of our kids and helping them get into the workforce. And then confirmed, now it is confirmed the way we're doing it now. So I'm wondering, getting a little stronger with their wording, what's that going to look like? That's why your advisor is so important right now, where Jolene is right now. Tracking kids down is kind of part of her duties and figuring out where kids end up along with our counselor. You realize they are serving the middle school to the high school, so it's kind of important to have two of them there. There's a lot of work there. The completion of early college or associate's degree there. Then of Core fifty, forty-two, I'm taking a guess that that is your basics in college. I'm just guessing, but I, that's the first time I've seen that in the last few weeks, and I haven't had time to look into that. But there are actually some districts that actually get you to an associate's degree. I know North Kansas City does. It's usually pretty large districts that do that. But we have a lot of students that are graduating out of our school district that are freshman year or beyond. You know, they're hitting into their sophomore year because they're picking up enough college debt.
Second semester of their sophomore year, most of them that take the advantage.
Yep. So stackable credits, I think that's with your OSHA ten or if you're going to be some kind of a computer tech where you can stack these things up, or if you're going to be into welding, you have more, there's a lot of different certifications that go through welding. You can stack those up and be even more qualified. And then department-approved, they're talking about DESI-approved work readiness measures. That really hasn't been defined yet. So, so a lot of ways, all of these things, talking about success-ready, they're going to be laying on top of Tipton schools and all five hundred-plus schools in the state and trying to collect data and say, how are we doing? Well, here's how we say you're doing because this is the data you turned in. So we've got some learning loss. What do we do when students don't learn? A lot of schools around the state are seeing a A lot of schools around the state are seeing a lot of problems right now, more than we are. If you were listening to the news the last few days, you've probably heard Columbia Public Schools, anybody hear about their attendance rate district-wide? What I heard was sixty-seven percent. They're struggling. They're struggling to get kids back in the door on a regular basis. We're not near that. We're in the nineties in all of our buildings. But, intervention is important because these kids have missed time. For about two years, they've missed significant amount of time and they've had difficulty. So the cardinal says here, giving failing grades is not an intervention. I like that, I left it on there from a slide a long time ago. So, summation, before I transition over to, who's going first? Ms. Medder, okay. There are a lot of measures in our new MSEP-6, okay? I went through a whole bunch of them really fast. Operating as a PLC is our foundational philosophy. That's the umbrella. So our districts are success-ready, answering those corollary questions. There are those four questions. What do we want students to learn? How do we know when they learned it? What do we do if they don't? How do we enrich their experiences? Learning loss is a real concern. And if we intervene and help kids that are falling outside of where we want them to be when they graduate, then that's what we need to focus on as we emerge from the pandemic. And we're actually required to put some of our funds directly that way. So, that's my last slide. But if you want the key words out of our mission statement, prepare, design that learning culture of excellence, sustain it, have an excellent experience here at Tipton, our sixth school district. So, I'm going to slide now to Ms. Medder. So I gotta go back here. See where you are. I think I already opened yours. That's it? There you go, Ms. Medder.
Thank you. We are a team and let me tell you, I like this team that I work with. One, we're fun, except they... I had my warrants and I was so ready and then they didn't have them. So, here we go. But we are, we do all work as a team. We work every day. Lots of small little meetings throughout the day of like what's going on, where things are at. The four of us, I think, do a good job of communicating and collaborating what we need for the next level. So, I'm just going to jump back to what Dr. Robinson presented to you, what we look at each day and every time that I'm faced with a question, and I think these ladies are too, when we're looking at whether it's an even Jason with activities and athletes, these are those four questions that we just use on a continuous basis. We're faced with a kid, what's going on? What's happening with them? What do we need to do to make it work for them? That's my phrase that I like the best is make it work. And whatever we need to do for that particular child, because the number one thing, I believe, for every member of our team is that we're going to do what's best for kids first. That's the number one thing. That's who we work for each day. So going back to those things that Dr. Robinson already showed with you, these are the questions that we ask as we go through this. I'm going to let Ms. Pedergroup go first with elementary.
Okay, so I'm just going to talk on the areas of academic focus this year. A few of the things up here you're going to notice are things we've done in the past and we just continue to use them. But there are some new things as well. We're using iReady, ELA, and math. And we're doing the diagnostic testing along with the personalized learning path for the students. We have completed the first one at the beginning of the year. Students are finishing up the second one. When the teachers come back in January, we'll get back together and look at that and decide what haven't students learned and what do we need to finish up the year, making small group recommendations and focusing on standards that need to be addressed. The personalized learning path is something that students use every single day at school. Not every day, I guess every week they have minutes. But that is a way for them to get the specific needs that they have that need to be addressed from their diagnostic that was identified. Something new is academic intervention. We had talked at the beginning of the school year before we ever started and we thought that making things familiar for students, but from K-12 was important. And so, we adopted that in the elementary. The students meet three days a week. We have, right now, we started with grades three, four, and five. Students are recommended for academic intervention based on whatever they need, either math or ELA. And they're only attending on the nights that the need that they have is addressed. So I have teachers doing that right now. After Christmas, we are going to also pull in some second graders. We need some extra additional help. We also have small group instruction. This is something that we've always done, but I felt like the focus and as a group, we felt like the focus of our small group needed some help. So, Amanda Simon has been an excellent resource in her new position, especially with reading. And so, she is going to provide some professional development in January for our teachers and give them the resources they need. We kind of talked to Nancy and said, hey, when we come back in January on that first day for PD, I want her to present to them. And before she starts her title services, then I want her to go into the class and model what that looks like for them. And then, also allow that next day for her to go back and help them and mentor them to make sure we have it in place and that we're going and they feel like they're ready to be successful. We've talked about letters training off and on. I know that we use those acronyms. This is something that DESI's big push from the beginning of the year. And we jumped on and said, hey, we'll be a hosting site. We'll let you guys come here. I want all of the teachers from kindergarten through fifth grade, special education teachers, title teachers, everyone to go through the training. And that just means that they're getting instruction on how to use and apply skills in the classroom to be really great reading teachers. They start the foundations and say, what do, how do kids learn to read? And what do you need to do in the classroom to make sure their needs are met? So, that has been an awesome opportunity for our teachers as well.
And that three days per week, I don't know if you said that or not, that's after-school?
Yes, after-school for an hour. They stay and our teachers have been willing to do that. We've had a lot of help and teachers being willing to substitute in. Good feedback, the kids love it. They're really focused on, I said, when we talked, I'm like, I don't want an hour of worksheets. I don't want an hour of just sitting there and hammering the same things you have all day. Hands-on, make it fun for them and integrate learning through it. And they've done a fantastic job doing that.
We also had Gretchen Gutar come in with manipulatives and some really good hands-on type activities for both reading and for math. And then, she's met with both principals. She was actually in charge of professional development for all Jeff City at one point. So she's a really good resource for us, she's super talented.
Yeah, and she's coming back January third for a PD day too, so. Another one, and this is the same thing we've done before, but PBS, just like Dr. Robinson said, that having students at school is important while having students in the classroom is always also important. So having a framework and a structure for the students so they know the expectations, but also for the teachers to feel like they're supported to keep the students in the classroom. You know, when they have to leave the classroom, they're missing instruction. So we've got to find ways to keep them in. That also feeds into our academics. And then again, PLTW, we've had that. That was something adopted several years ago, or I guess probably four now at this point. But the teachers are still continuing to teach three models and modules in their classrooms. And then, we invite family and community members in once a year for those modules. So, that's what we're doing in the elementary right now.
Okay. So, what you're going to see probably, and you may notice, is that you see a lot of the same acronyms at the elementary that you do at the middle school and high school. One of the things I think Ashley and Ms. Nancy and I are all trying to do is we're trying to make sure that from the time they enter school until the time they leave as twelfth graders, they're seeing the same things all the way through. So we're doing the same things as a district. So the interventions that we were using at the middle school and the high school previously, Ashley has taken those down to the elementary to use what you see with them using PBS. We're bringing that up into the middle school, high school. So, from start to finish, we're all on the same page, which is a good thing to have. We have increased the PLTW offerings at the middle school and high school with the support of Ashley helping me with that and helping guide me through that. So that we have cybersecurity that has been added. And that's also through State Fair that we've used that. We have some others that we're going to be adding. Social and behavior expectations. We are working on that, I'm going to say that. We're in the implementation process of it. Nancy, not this Nancy, but Nancy Rogers that comes in and works with the elementary, she is coming back to work with us. And so, there's a whole team when we talk about professional learning communities. We have a team of educators that are working on what behavior should look like at the middle school and high school and those expectations and how we put that into place. When you use restorative practices, we learned about that last year, coupled with PBS and then traditional consequences. All of those things come into play to help improve behavior so that kids are in their seats where they need to be learning. Ms. Thomas went to a, Ms. Thomas there, lots of Thomases, Nancy's, everybody all over the place. Ms. Thomas went to a restorative practices training with me along with Ms. Garber and it talked about how that triad has to happen. You have to have all those things to move forward. And so, we've really started looking at our data and giving that to that behavior team to say, what, where are really our problem areas? Also, looking at where the problems are coming from. So we're really digging into what discipline data looks like. We haven't done that in the past. Response to learning, we're continuing the academic intervention. We show that it works when it's used and practiced appropriately. We have academic intervention that's gone on all the semester throughout the day and after-school. This Ms. Thomas right here is a part of leading that team of what our Jan term looks like. She had a meeting last week for me with the Jan term team that will take care of those kids that need to reclaim credit. So, when I say I know about that, I've actually handed that off to an educator to help lead and guide that along with the team. When Dr. Robinson talks about success-ready students, that truly is one step I want to take further moving forward besides the things that we offer there, is to offer a Jump Start Academy for our sixth graders coming up next year that makes them prepared, gives them those tools that they need for the middle school. I looked back at some notes that I had from many, many years ago when Mrs. Basinger and I were teachers together and we did a Jump Start Academy where they came up for two weeks and they learned, or at least a week, and they learned what the tools that they were going to need to be successful in that transition. And I believe that with the learning loss and what we faced in the last two years, that's something that needs to be revisited. And so, we're going to be trying to add that to the summer school. I think Ashley had something similar to that in the fall this year for the little ones coming in. And I think that we need that at the middle school level again. We're working hard on adding more educators out there. And so, we've increased what we offer here in our district. We're one of two schools in the state. I'm going to say that again, we're one of two schools in the state through Warrensburg, UCM, that are offering educational courses for dual credit to high school, junior, and seniors. So, we're doing our part.
Talking about teaching.
Teaching, yes. Teaching profession. We're promoting the teaching profession within our school. And, as I said, UCM is working with us. We have the most students enrolled at the two schools. They have one, we have six. So, very proud of that. I feel like that we're a pilot school. There's a few other things that we're adding. The Project Accelerators class, I look for that to transition over into a leadership-type class in the coming years. And again, I said, education. I sat through a webinar today with a program through our E-Ments grant that we have. That's how we receive the computers for the middle school. Those one hundred that we got in, one hundred and twenty-five, I think, is what we got in at the time. I sat through them, it's called Design, Learning by Design, how they can promote. But what I see is that trickling up to the high school is what they talk to us about as well. Curriculum, Dr. Robinson already touched on that, that we're doing vertical alignment. We started that actually in previous years as I came on board with that of making sure our teachers were meeting. Went so far as to ask some teachers to step out last year and got them some substitutes for our math department to say, what do we need to do with math? And they met with some veteran educators and some leadership to show them, say, this is where we need to be. These are the goals we have. And Ms. Thomas is sitting here with English. They've been doing that all along as we add them in to make sure that we go from fifth grade all the way up through twelfth grade. They know what they're supposed to know and it's matched up at each level. But I'd ask them to do all of that and also document it on a schedule. We provided them some time during the professional development days and we will continue to do that. But we're also going to provide them some summertime to do that and make sure that it's done well. So that when a new teacher walks into the building, it isn't scrambling to figure out what we teach and where we teach. We can say, here it is, pull it up. These are the standards that need to be taught in this class. It's right there. But it's also visible to parents through our website and an online platform. That if you want to know why they're learning what they're learning, you can click on it, go to what that unit is and go, oh, this is what you're supposed to be learning in this, which will help you as a parent in hell. That's the goal. Professional learning communities, the teams that I have listed there meet at each of our professional development days. And that's all part of our district continuous improvement. The two areas that we are continuously working on, and I think when I say continuously, I don't know as ever a year in education when I wasn't working on those two things as a whole staff, is engagement of students and getting our kiddos to critically think about things, giving them things that really make them kind of struggle on the brain a little bit. That the answer just isn't on the worksheet. But how are you going to really solve this problem? Because we all know that in life, it's not a worksheet. Most of the time in life, you take the test and learn the lesson. That's how it generally works. So, working on that. And also, within the last two years, resetting some expectations of what learning looks like in the classroom and being present. But also for educators of that this is what we need educators to do so kids learn. So resetting those expectations. I wanted to provide you with a little bit of data in comparison to give you an idea of where we're at so that you also have some talking points if you're asked about it. You look at our attendance data from twenty-one, twenty-two to now. And when I ran these numbers, I did run them from August through December. So what you're looking at there is not a month, that's a whole semester percentage when I ran those numbers. So you can see that our middle school stayed pretty consistent. Parents are going to have those kids at school. High school, you're going to see a two percent difference over a semester time between last year and this year. I did include our November numbers because I'm going to be honest, I'm really proud of really one of them, very, very proud of it. We had ninety-nine percent attendance at our middle school in November. So ninety-nine percent were there throughout the month. High school stayed very consistent at the ninety-two. We are looking at assessment data when we say that. We're looking at where is the state average at and where do we need to be in comparison to that? We want to be with that, or my always goal. Most of you guys know me, I want to be above or ahead of that most of the time. So, that's what we're looking at. We moved away from iReady at the middle school area and moved into an Evaluate program. It was something that we had here some time ago that does testing. It shows growth. And Evaluate test shows how they're growing and what they're learning. And because that is part of MSEP-6 is coming through, is they are looking at a growth model. We went back to that. But the, one of the main reasons I felt like we needed to go back to that is because iReady went up through middle school, but Evaluate went all the way up through eleventh grade on those EOCs that we need, okay? So we're able to look at a student from the sixth grade all the way up through the eleventh grade if we stick with this program and see their progression and see where they're at with the standards that we're working on. And I say priority standards, those are important. We want to know how they're doing on those. I visited with Ms. Thomas, I visited with Mr. Overbeck about how our kids know that. And that's what's important to me, the kids know where they're at. So, when they take their test, those teachers should be having those conversations with them of, this is where you scored this time, this is where you need to score next time. Ms. Thomas and I were just having a conversation back there about where the numbers were at and what things looked like and who had moved from basic to proficient or proficient to advanced. Who had dropped back? What did they know? Evaluate gives us a good model because the standards that they test in October are the standards that they test in December. The standards that they test in September are the standards that they test in November. So you can have that growth that you can check. The last thing is always the academic intervention that we're working on. And this is the part many, I say, four years ago when Ms. Patsy was in here and said, I want to know where things are at and why they're at. That's something that I track continuously because of my conversations with her. Where are we at? You can see that probably one of those numbers I'm not real happy with right now because it's bigger than it was last year at this time. But I can tell you this about that particular number. Even though in the middle school, it's twelve versus fifteen, the fifteen that I have right now have one F where the twelve that I had last year would have four or five. So, yes, my number is bigger, but when I looked at the individual data, there's less, more students with one, but they have less. They only have the one. Or they're at a 58 or a 48. They're not at a 23. And that's what I'm pleased with. High school, of course, is that number is lower. And so I'm very pleased with that as well. Do you all have any questions for me? Lots of stuff.
I got one thing. So one, this is really organized and nice to kind of see everything. I, I think when I talk to teachers or educators and I'm married to one.
Yes, sir.
It's just, there's always more and more coming at you guys, right?
Yes, sir.
So there's new standards, there's MSEP 6, there's all these things. Are, are we just continuing to heap more on people or are some things that were older methods of educating, are those getting removed and we're, does that make sense?
Yes, I know what you're asking. So let me answer it this.
Because at some point, you know, it's more and more.
When is enough enough?
Yeah, right.
I think for me, when I look at things, I know where we were when I took the job as principal. When you all, when you all offered me that position and said, and Dr. Robinson said, these are the things that we need to improve. These are the things that we need to work on. I think that we were on that track four years ago. And then we had this big upset with the pandemic. What I want to make sure that you all know is where I was four years ago is I've never swayed from that. We've always had those same expectations of what should be done. It's just now we're moving out of that and those are coming back to light of, hey, well, it's time to get back to work.
You're stepping on the gas again.
We need to go. We need to get these things accomplished. Are we, are we heaping on more? No, these are things that should have been done anyways.
Okay.
That's the way I'm going to say it. It's like the curriculum. Having your curriculum online isn't new. It's new for us, but it's not new for the other schools in the state.
Right.
And we need, we need to be there too, because we're a good school.
Yeah.
I mean, we're a good school and.
You've got good kids.
And I heard a hint of almost like some individualized learning. And so just how do you navigate that, I guess, with the staff that you have?
And that's my problem. That, that's where Ms. Thomas with the Jan term group that she's leading there with that individual intervention that we do during the day with Ms. Milton that's in our learning lab. That's how I'm going to say it, in our media center.
And also Jolene.
Yeah, and Jolene and working with those, with that, helping direct that. I don't know, is it's more? I'm not trying to put on more. We're not trying to add more to them. We're trying to make sure the things that are good practice and good procedure, that are good for kids, we are doing those things. And maybe with a little better fidelity, again, like we were four years ago before all of this hit and we were trying to survive through it. Does that help?
Yeah.
Does that answer?
Yeah.
Okay. Go Nancy, tell them about the individual.
Okay. And I'll follow up on that by saying that what we're trying to do is to become more efficient and effective in what we're doing. If it's not working, when we look at our data, there's no point in continuing to do it. We need to do what's working. And so you all know how I love my triangle. And so all the things that Ashley and Ms. Metter were talking about are in that bottom level of the triangle. That's for all kids and serving the needs of all kids. My part is the middle of the triangle, which is our special services, the title programs. That's where we, and we are doing, we added last year, we, we recognized that math was something that was really important. So we are doing daily math title support in grades K through five. So that means there are small groups of three to six kids who get an extra 30 minutes, a double dip of that math list in that day in every classroom. Same thing with the elementary for the reading and the English language arts. Those kids get an extra double dip of services and support and instruction for grades K through five. At the middle school, we also talked about, when I started, we didn't have any services at middle school. And middle school needed services. It was like they came and they fell off a cliff. And so.
That's what data showed.
That's what our data.
Six years of data showed that.
Yeah. And so that's where we decided we were going to add the, the title services to that level. And so what we've done is we now are able to do math support for sixth, seventh and eighth grade. Sixth grade students get it every single day. There's a, for 30 minutes, they're pushed into the general education classroom. Seventh and eighth grade students get a little less, but they're, but again, we're trying to move them to have them be more and more independent because in high school, we don't provide that service. So. And then district wide, for our students who are English language learners, we provide that extra support for those students. And then we also have special supports for students who are experiencing homelessness. Because that is a group of students that have a whole lot of other issues that we need to deal with at the same time. So. I did put on here our rural behavioral counseling, I think is one of, another one of our services that we're providing for students. We have, we have two full-time, no, we have two counselors and two school-based support specialists that come in, have every week to see kids. So. All right. And I hit enter, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then the very top of the triangle is my special ed, special education services. And we start those for the early intervention. So kids who are three to five, they're not even in school. If we can identify that they're have some type of a disability, we can go ahead and provide those early intervention services to them so that they get a head start and are ready to go when school starts. We provide reading, math and writing services for all of, any student with an IMP, grades K through 12. Same thing with social skills. Social skills are just as important as academic skills. You have to be able to get along with your friends and you've got to be able to be able to be in class. We have some students that we do not have the capacity to serve. They have higher needs. And so we're able to contract, thank you all very much, because there are many districts who do not do that. They just kind of put them in a closet and hope for this. So I'm very, very appreciative to the school board. We are continuing to add into our vocational classes for our middle school and high school students who have special needs or more, are more of the life skills students. And they're doing job exploration, project-based learning, the, they're, it's all hands-on, hands-on kinds of things. And that goes right along with the, you heard them talk about the vocational rehabilitation and the pre-employment transition special, a pre-ET. We always have acronym. So the pre-ET, we've had the pre-ETS at our district since I started. And we also are working with the Independent Living Resource Center to come and they come help teach driving lessons and all kinds of things. So. The other part that we, we are adding increased community-based instructional opportunities to get kids out into the community, volunteering, doing things, again, hands-on, applying those, those academic skills. I'm very proud of our inclusive leisure skills class. It is now, and I worked with Mrs. Metter, and it is an elective class for high school students. They apply to be in the class. Next month at the board meeting, we're going to do a presentation on that for you all and the students and the kids are going to do that for you. And we're going to, we've got an opportunity, a really cool thing. So, but you'll have to wait. And then we also added a new life skills class because we've had a great increase in the number of students who have more significant needs. So that's, again, meeting the needs of the kids that we have. And I think that if I would say anything, it's our special services program. We try and create programs that fit the kid. We don't make kids fit into a program. So I think that's, there was a motto for me, it wouldn't be build the future, it'd be, we build, we build programs for kids. So, any questions about my part?
Nope. Okay. Jason is not here because he is supervising, but as a part of our team, activities and athletics prove that kids who are involved do better. Okay? If they're involved in something, whatever it may be, and we have a wide variety of things that they can be involved in. But then he and I had also put into place a little bit of a different structure than what we'd had 10 years ago of what it looked like with grade checks to keep those kids involved, but also make them accountable. So when it says, when it talks about the three to six weeks after school tutoring, if a student becomes failing, they're not being completely removed from that activity or athletic, but they're provided that support that they need. So you have a situation where our wrestling coaches just walked down to the academic intervention today. She's nodding her head because she shared that with me, you know, walked down and wanted to check on the kids that are are still in the wrestling program, trying to get to where they need to be. They've just got one there that they're working on or their, the grade may have dropped, but they've come down there and those coaches are popping in. Coach Duke is sitting here. He had the same thing that he supported with us through the football season that, and, and with our other activities as well, that we're working with those kids to keep them involved and give them a way to do that. So this also supports it that you're not going to practice, you're not kicked out of the sport, but you're not going to practice. You're getting your academics done so that you can still participate and still be a part of things. We think that that's a critical part of it. We've had some very good success in the fall. We've had some great success now. It's not just with athletics though. We also have Scholar Bowl and we have choir and we have band, that those students have to be eligible to participate. Those are still ran by Mischa. Her speech and debate group is also archery. It's all approved by Mischa. We have to follow those guidelines. So we hope to do that. I did put this picture up here because we all, I know, are very proud of the accomplishments of Coach Dick and the teams that were with him. We wanted to make sure we recognize that in the golf program that we've had here at Tipton as well. Jason did not provide me with anything. He gave me a few notes, so I made sure I did that. If you have questions, I suggest that you reach out to Jason Culpepper, Culpepper, J at Tipton. That was the US.
So Coach Duke shared that he can, that you congratulated him a few weeks into the football season for something. Do you remember what that was?
I do. And I actually walked down the hall and congratulated Mr. Wickham today about that as well. When Coach Duke interviewed with me, he asked, he asked us all in the interview, what is it that you want from me? Or what is it that you want from the football coach? And I said, I'm going to cry. I said, I want there to be gentlemen. I want the people that are in the program with you to be gentlemen. In the hallways and represent us that way where they go. And I congratulated him about that because they are, they are gentlemen. And Ms. Prediger who got to witness last night.
All the boys came in for junior high basketball in Stover and they were waiting for their locker room and they came in and I'm like, they all have dress pants on. They have their shirts tucked in. They were nicely dressed, the best that they could. Their hair was combed. And they looked like gentlemen as they came across. I mean, they looked excellent. They handled themselves well.
And they won?
Yep.
But I, I did walk, when I saw Mr. Wickham this morning in the hallway, he was coming back from band because Mr. Wickham does band with Mr. Maddox because there's 40 some kids in the junior high band. I, I did, I shook his hand and I said, congratulations. And he said, oh, on the win? I said, no. On them being dressed up and their hair combed and looking good and acting like gentlemen. And people from the crowd noticing and commenting to her of what they look like. You know, that's important to me that our school, I want us to be successful in the classroom. I want all of the things. But I want us to have ladies and gentlemen that leave our school and that are respectful individuals in our community. So that's my goal. Oh, and then we have to have this because we're A to all five. So do you have any other further questions for us?
Best cheering section I think we've had in a long time.
It's just beautiful. I, I had.
Three feet distance or masks or anything?
I had a patron of our district stopped in and said, oh my gosh, wow, your all's gym looks really good. And I'll be honest, I had some interviews that I had to do this week. And as I was touring some of our candidates around, they are people from our community said, the school has changed so much and it looks so good. So very, very pleased with what we're. Okay, I'm just going to leave that up there because it's very.
Did you might have any questions? I don't know if anybody, if you all caught Jason's report, I'll touch on it liquidly and has touched on it. At the very end, a couple of officials wrote in.
About our school.
Yeah, the school and the athletic teams props for being good sports. You know, the atmosphere was great. I mean, one guy had done it, one person had done it 16 years and said, this is the most, the best time I've had. So I think that alludes to what Leanna is saying, what Coach Duke's been working on. Wickham, like they're trying to, they're doing their best to create a good environment and have good young men, good young ladies.
Just, just not them. I mean, Coach Neal, Overbeck, all of our coaches have those expectations and across the board, they're going to do a great job.
That's good. Then Ash's report, you had your, the team came in.
Yeah, and they came in and did our PBS. Told them lots of great things. One of us is an old superintendent and he came in and he goes, the best thing I know that if I have run like a really nice school and it stays nicely, I check the bathrooms and I look at the mirrors in there. And he goes, it looks excellent. And I'm like, Molly, you did an awesome job last night.
But that's all I got. I just wanted to touch on that. Okay, so moving on. We have old business. So what we have here is, as you all know, we've been hashing this out for a while. Dr. Rob's put out, we found as much information as you can to make it idiot-proof. So I guess it basically comes down to us as a board, what you want to do. There's basically three options there. Either you can table it, you can approve it, or you can just say, all right, I'm done talking about it. We're moving on. We're going to spend our energy, our time and energy elsewhere. Again, this is a board decision. I mean, this is not, I don't think this is a personal want from Dr. Rob. I mean, I think as, as a community, I mean, I think everybody would want something nice. But unfortunately, like with anything else, you're going to have 10,000 opinions. You're going to have way more Indians than sheeps. Everybody's going to have their own opinion. So if you all want to cuss and discuss some more, or somebody speak up, tell, tell, tell me, put your feelings out there. I mean, it's not so much, it is so much as a board. But as a board, we can't have the leader of our ship working on something that's not going to come to fruition. He's got other irons in the fire that he needs to be concentrating on besides quote unquote, beating a dead horse.
So we got support from just over 100 people and we need 450 people to support it. I'd say we're about at 150 if I go back and look at the faculty survey to, there were a couple of different ones and I look back and I looked at the sign-in sheets. I'm going to make an estimate of about 150.
And you brought that in the paper, Facebook, you've put it out there. It's everyone's seen it.
Brad Arrow was at the tournament. Even had that interview with, when we saw that Lincoln.
Yeah.
We talked about it, Coach Duke and I did at the banquet. He had about 120 and I think 30 people there. I think it's a matter of, in my view, for whatever reason, people won't put their name down. It was like, Ellis, you all helped us develop this. We'll listen to you. And that's what I kept trying to put out is, hey, you know, nothing's set in stone. It may not be turf. Maybe you guys decide you want to do really nice side. You know, maybe that's what we do. But something needs to be done. You've got to be the field house, you know, it's a pretty rough shape. We don't put this on the bond. I think, you know, we saw some of the audit results and we're talking about how much money was spent. And we've sheltered a lot of that to teachers. We've sheltered a lot of that to learning loss, which we're required to do. We've also picked up at least purchases to finish off a project because the community didn't pass it the first two times and the cost of our project was about three quarters of a million dollars. Nobody predicted that. That's what happened. You know, and people did not listen to us when we said we need to replace the HVAC. We definitely should upgrade our security. Look at what's going on in the world. And that's unfortunate. You know, it seems like it's very difficult to pass a bond issue in this community, even when it's no tax increase. And I think I told you guys this before, we're one of eight districts out of about 65 districts. And I think I've told you guys this before, we're one of eight districts out of about sixty-five districts in the state in 2020 that did not pass their bond issue, no tax increase. And some, a lot of those districts were paying, sorry, passing increases to their actual level. It wasn't just no tax increase. We were one of eight out of almost sixty-five. So I'm, I'm here to work at the board's pleasure. Obviously, I'd like to see our facilities continue to grow, or I would put some work into it. And I saw, you know, the program being very successful and first winning season we've had in ten years. I see a lot of kids with a lot of enthusiasm. I remember seeing them back in middle school and thinking, we need to be ready for this group. And they come through, they're gonna play hard for us. We get some things in place. We've made some, some token, Coach Duke and his wife have been over there and worked through the field house on their own. Jason's been in there and sprayed the thing down with the paint. We polished the turd. That's what we've done. You know, it's workable. I walked a plumber through there last week and just looking at some of the issues there and he said, oh, this is rough. And I said, you should have seen it last year or the year before, you know, so there are needs there. Will the community pass it? Who knows? Toss a coin at it, you know? I think we passed the bond issue we really needed to actually function and have HVAC. I guess we're supposed to put window fans in. I don't know. We didn't get that passed, but we passed that one.
With sixty-three percent or something?
There you go, sixty-three percent. We needed fifty-seven point one.
Do you remember?
Ten million off of it.
I don't know.
We didn't run a numbers, number of the survey for that one, did we?
We did not.
We had more than a hundred and fifty people supporting this. It's just you're not gonna catch everybody in the survey.
True.
Would we need up to fifty-seven percent?
Fifty-seven point one four.
Which is?
It's gonna be in the four hundreds probably.
How much money does it cost to put out there, do you know?
I don't know. I'd have to go back to those riddles. It's not astronomical. Leslie, can you remember what the counties are charging us to run an election? I was thinking it's been more than a few thousand.
And you've got around, well, you're doing an election anyway.
It's a more election.
Do we have very much interest in steering committee or people willing to help?
We do. I think if I remember right, I have to go back to the survey, it's about twelve, twelve people maybe. It seemed that some people wanna do it. And I think there's some people we could coax to come in and be a part of that. And I think if the board committed to actually listen to what those people are saying and take their recommendations, it'd be a good thing. We had at least one in front of the board who was sitting in there listening to that. There is some, there's a good indication of momentum. I don't remember any other bond issues where we had a hundred and fifty people saying that they vote for it, put their name down. So that's a good sign, right? Coach Duke did share with me, I'm gonna put you on the spot, but there are some companies he believes could possibly, if it passed, actually start this summer. Now, that's your opinion, right, Coach?
Well, they would have it done by day one. They'd have the whole thing.
Aren't you speaking for them, so be careful? Just know what, what gets in their way.
Yeah, some people that have doubled from the past. That's correct.
Possibility. Now, according to our architect, just so you know, Coach, he thinks it would be until 2024 that we'd actually have this project to go.
Well, and you have to do an RFP, so.
Yep, takes a little while.
Yeah, and you don't know what company gets that in.
If we do go with something like this, what are the thoughts of the practice field?
I, I, I don't know why we need a practice field as much as we actually have a turf field.
Right, so is it something that we can either use to build new buildings on? Or would it be something that we could possibly, at a later date, if we had money, go forth and add an additional part to where we can have a softball and baseball here on campus as well?
That would be up.
Using part of the football field?
That'd be up to the board. If, if I was looking at all of our facilities, it's my opinion, if you wanted to be on a budget and to save money, is that your elementary school would go on the hill where the practice field is. Because then you're not buying new land, putting in new infrastructure. In the first phase of that, if growth would happen here, you'd have a space to clear off the hillside. Put, beginning, maybe it's a pre-k or a kindergarten or kindergarten one, two, and start in sections, building the elementary as you need it. And then slowly, the building down below the hill would go to a seven twelve. So then you wouldn't have to go buy new land. You'd have an all-in-one K-12 you're probably looking at. You know, you might get up to about twelve hundred, thirteen hundred students at that point. So you can hold those stuff. Then the next thing you do is build another elementary. That's, that's kind of a natural progression that you see, is to use your available footprint. Now, with the city that already has the baseball softball field, maybe we have more collaboration with them. That's a cost-saving measure for us. It would be nice to have one here, right? We've drawn up some plans and shown them there. But I think it would be really hard to think about. I know there's been boards in the past that thought about putting a high school out here. What was it, past the Campbell factory or whatever?
Yeah.
That would not have been a good move. It's probably a good thing that got voted down. I mean, that would have been cost out, I wouldn't want to, that's not thinking about using what you have. It's like, one of the reasons, I, this is my opinion now, I think we need to take care of what we have. You know, one of the things people talk about about is gym space too. I, I think, yeah, if we had more gym space, we'd use it. But the gym that is in the elementary, which is not full-size, was supposed to take up that whole cafeteria and be full-size. Maybe that's another project down the road. We say, hey, let's go ahead and see if we can convert that. But right now, your football field is not in the best shape. Your field house is not in the best shape. Maybe we should be taking care of things that are here that benefit the most, that benefit the most, from band to TRA, the community, to track, to football teams, just everybody pouring into that piece. And plus, it gives people in the community something too, for the walking track. You know, they get a piece of the pot, so to speak. You've got soccer that's still played. And I think about our band, you know, having a dry place to practice in the morning, P E classes have something, we could have a field day. You've got, people say, don't say this. Well, it's, it's good enough for Relay for Life. Well, last night, Relay for Life doesn't wanna be on. Didn't wanna come to our facilities. So it's kinda getting to that point. I talked to Matt Davis at Eldon. He says, this is just his opinion. I didn't ask him, but he said, you know, Terry, you're focusing on the right thing. He says, I've been to your facilities. They look pretty poor. That's another superintendent talking to me. And I say, so you think I'm doing the right thing? Yes. He says, that will make your district step up a notch. He said, you're, you're focused on the right thing. So I appreciate that feedback. You know, so I'm not saying I'm right. I'm just saying, I think it benefits a lot of people. That's my opinion. But nobody here is gonna hurt my feelings if you say, we don't wanna do it right now, Dr. Rob, because of the board. I'm not gonna walk around and, and run my mouth after it's over and say, okay, we gotta focus on some academics or whatever, or programs for kids. And I redirect mine. I only got so much juice in the day. I'll start redirecting it, you know, but.
We're not talking about huge costs putting it on there, is that right?
No.
And we talked about your time, how much of your time is truly invested in it?
I don't think I can give you a calculation one way or the other.
I mean, it is after it passes, right? If it passes, well, up until that point.
The architect wants ten grand to start engaging the community and the steering committee and coming up with the RFPs and start talking with us from January to the time the bond issue comes out. I think that builds even more momentum. So my time, I'm gonna be there. Thank you, Coach Duke, be there. It's like, we're gonna be talking, you know, with the community and what they think. And you guys being, if this happens, and you guys having a communication between that committee and then talking about what they'd like to see on a budget, because we're only gonna have so much money to deal with.
Yeah, I'm gonna get everything. We're not getting a new field house.
I don't think we'll get a totally new field house. I think we'll probably get a remodel and maybe a small revision. Probably the most we could hope for. I think we get a really nice refurbishing out there. There might be some parts that need to go. Architect hasn't given me anything on that yet, but he's been out and done some measurements and had the lasers out here. And I know he's cracking on it.
From what I have seen, there's a whole different attitude about this bond coming up than the last bond we passed. You don't hear the griping and the complaining. I've only heard one no. I don't travel much, you know, I'm not out much. But anyway, I do talk to people around Swolba. I, there's something different this time than last time. There is a more of a yes, you know, and it's just a different feeling. I, that's all I can say. So I think this one has maybe a better chance of passing than the last one, if you wanna know the truth. So I don't know if the rest of you have picked up on that or not. When, you know, people talk to you or they say something, you can get that feeling.
I agree that it's different. It's different people that you're hearing from. It's different, not focusing on certain things this time than it was last time. Maybe focusing on something different this time, but.
I've had a lot reach out to me too. I think through surveys, you engage, you, you capture the people that are most engaged. Because of that, I would be in favor of putting it on to capture everybody.
I think so too. And I think they're looking for, I mean, there's like a joy. Maybe we're gonna get this, you know, and, and I think they're wanting it, particularly the younger. You know, so the parents will be happy if their kids coming up there are interested in sports. And it needs some work out there, that field does.
Anything for us? You make a motion?
Okay. I'll do it.
Hang on just one second. Just one second before we get rolling here. I do have a question.
Okay.
For ten thousand dollars, he wants paid when?
Probably make payments.
Can you explain why we didn't do that?
I can send you what we sent you. In general, to start engaging the community, start drawing up plans with them to spend the time down here, the time is already spent down here.
I mean, this is just a question. Do we need that? I mean, I, I don't know. Maybe we do.
Will the amount of bond doesn't change whether you spend it or not, right? Whether you spend it an hour later? I would say no, but I don't know.
Does that hurt our chances of passing? You don't do that significantly or, or not? I have no idea.
Says he will provide options and costs in the building portion of your project for your community communications. The lead effort leading up to April bond issue is previously discussed with pride and services were stipulated to be ten thousand dollars and bill monthly over the next five months. This is a cover of the work to date on the traffic, the planning, images, plus the effort on the concession, restroom, locker room, weight room facility to give you and your community ideas of what can be done and costs. Right now, the budget I passed along should contain our fee for architectural engineering for our industry design, detailed building support here, support you through construction.
So he's saying he's rendered work and not built for it?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's included in then what he would say we can get our bond for? It's all part of that, the money we would give him?
It's like a down payment.
Yeah.
It's like, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start to time up hours for Tipton. This is what I want to get started. Kinda like you retain an attorney.
One way to look at it is regardless of the, what happens here, there has to be something that, that happens with the way.
Yeah.
I mean, it really does.
And I haven't seen all of them.
Those plans would be useful, even if we didn't have a bond to approve the whole thing. There's just not enough space in there. I'm concerned that it's a little bit of a safety issue having those kids in there. We got kids outside too.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the issue, the bond issue coming in, is it twenty twenty-three? Okay, to be placed on the ballot.
Okay, and you're approving the draft language? If there's a correction, will you get it in January? I'll go over again with the chapter.
He's asking for.
You're approving the draft language for the bond and the placement of the ballot in April?
Yes, including the draft language.
I'll second.
You got a motion by Patsy.
Ashley's second.
Seconded by Ashley. All in favor? Patsy's four-three.
Okay.
Moving on. We've got new business.
What's your first readings and policies that just came in? When, Wednesday?
Tuesday afternoon.
Tuesday afternoon, so I've not even read those yet. So we just got those put on there. So those will be on our agenda in January for approval. Just go ahead and read these those. We have a motion to approve. Oh, sorry, that's the audit below that and that's not those. Just making it aware on the first reading. We will not read those.
I'm gonna need to read all those out loud. I knew that.
Oh, my. I've never seen that before. Approval of the twenty-one, twenty-two audit. Any concerns? I have no concern.
I'll make a motion for it. It was presented today.
Say, motion by Bo, seconded by Diggs, all in favor. Seven-o.
And if you see Lisa, tell her thank you. She does a lot of her running, running down things that they're asking for. Do the, some of the significant events we've had with grants and things coming through. I had a little more work than normal on that too. It's like, whoa, okay. They, they really went back to some of the spreadsheets that I put in front of you, seeing how you were figuring out how to get the HVAC and all that. And then how we figured that out. Lead testing is just information. We're gonna be testing our water. We got the local city testing. It's actually lower than five parts per billion. Doesn't mean we have to do additional testing and filtering. But just a good sign, sign that we may not need to, that's why I need to be specific. The lead testing statewide for twenty twenty-four, there's a lot of timelines in there. There may be some grants, so I'll be looking for some grants to actually help us with that, so we don't have to end up into a lot of cost. They just have not released everything that they've got in that direction, so I'll be working on that piece here. Snow removal. I'm so glad it hasn't snowed yet, because I don't know how we did the snow remove. We do not have a maintenance director. We are too short. We're gonna look at one tonight. But we're too short on custodians right now. Sharon has come in out of retirement for twenty hours a week and she helped us with Tipton tournament. But I know you think, you know, you're thankful for her. But right now, I have snow removing bids. I have two. You can see the list of people that I was contacting and trying to see if they might be interested. And those are there. If we can get a maintenance director hired and get some people in, we will not need to use this company. But we probably need someone on the up just in case, because if the snow comes down and it's four to six inches, it may be there four to six days. Who knows? And we won't be able to get it off. It won't be the only place that's unplowed. So that's not good. Even though I'm sure Ms. Thomas would like to be home four to six days and have an extra stomach. But anyway.
Sometimes.
But there are the bids and it's been two. I hope we can approve them or recommend. There we go with Holm. He does Smithon as well.
I'll move to approve Holm excavating to do our snow removal in the amount of one thousand fifty dollars a time.
Is that accurate? A time?
A time.
They should still, I charged way less than that.
The other one was one thousand dollars.
That includes the central office, I would say, and it includes.
But not the sidewalks, we'll be doing sidewalks.
Okay, and then it includes the, everything else asphalt we got.
Student parking lot.
And student gravel.
I'm not including the gravel, because I don't want them to dig down into it.
Yeah, but, I mean, how, where are you gonna park all the kids?
They have their parking lot over there.
Maybe don't second me. I don't know any more options, I, I'd like to be clear on what's getting, if you want me to add that to that bid, probably be a few hundred dollars more, if you guys really want that plowed.
There is enough room in the student parking lot behind the grandstand for all the students to park there.
There's not?
There is.
Okay, I thought there was.
There is, but the seniors enjoy closer.
I'll amend my motion to uh accept Holm excavating for one thousand fifty. But that would include the central office, the area between the KC hall, I wanna be specific.
We got that.
The elementary, the teacher gravel parking that we just put in. And
Circle the line.
And, yeah.
Student permanent.
Circle, I mean, basically all our facilities.
Says all hard surfaces on the menu.
Yeah, we have, so last year the.
He's already gonna be here with a snowplow, how long does it take? I mean, you don't, you just don't set the depth. You, you know, you're not gonna push gravel off unless you don't know how to operate a snowplow. I mean, I don't know.
So who did this for last year?
It was herself.
That's what I thought, so do we have any idea of cost for some of the folks that are coming and saying that they do it as needed?
They have not given me a cost yet. And I've had several conversations, but they're, they're basically saying, well, I might if we can't get everybody to.
I might, okay.
Honestly, a whole lot of bid is extremely reasonable.
I think so, what's that?
Holm is extremely, to do that much for one thousand fifty dollars, and I'm sure, does it matter if it's two inches or eight inches or twelve inches of snow? Because that, I, I think it's.
And you're only gonna use it if, if it's needed, right? Yeah.
My goal will be, let's get our tractor up and running, get a maintenance director in there.
So our tractor isn't even running right now?
It's running. We're starting by.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I have my maintenance or custodial running out, but you know.
Your opportunity to get a dozer cleaning off a few buildings over at it. That's what I'm talking about, Holm excavating's got them too.
Probably unpopular with the kids, but if it saves us a couple hundred dollars for them to walk a little bit on those days, that would be fine, the issue's in the parking lot that they all can park in.
And my thought was too, I just didn't want to mess up the gravel and just put down, because every time I see them do it, it scrapes down deeper at the time of life. If you put more gravel down, that would be my two cents on it, and what I've seen other people do is not good. That's why we had some of those models, which we don't go there and dig in the lead.
We all used to have to walk it. We used to have to walk to the hill and back too, so, I mean.
So the hard surf, what we're approving is what he's saying.
Everything but the rock parking lot.
Yeah, that just worries me that you're gonna have a mess uh more than when you're not cleaning that off and people are wanting to park.
I don't think we see it.
If you can squeeze them all in that other lot.
We got, we got some four-wheel drive pickups.
I was gonna say, the boys, the boys with four-wheel drives, you know, are gonna pull in there.
Yeah, well, can we block it off?
Just chain it off.
Can.
Just, you can't let.
Parking bus and then.
You can't let kids in four-wheel drive pickups park, just chain it off.
But you're ruining it.
They feel bad donuts at the city park.
The thing is too, if you don't at least scrape that off, and it snows and then it's twenty degrees for the next four weeks, you're gonna have a snowlot for a long time.
So hopefully by that time, we have a person there to run the tractor.
Or someone that will be looking for the attendants.
I am hearing something.
So I don't know if my options are even here at this point. Hey, you guys have heard of Holm excavating for the bid present, get the details on it, um, because we don't have a lot of options here.
I second it.
You're gonna sign my plan?
A lot more.
Did you get that, Leslie?
I did.
Seconded by Stephanie. All in favor?
About where I live.
Oh, yeah, no, I am, um, we do, we do take care of all the salting and all that sort of stuff.
They're gonna do that too.
It says treatment.
They're gonna treat it.
What about pre-treatment? I don't, what do we do, I mean, what are we doing going into a, a night that we know is pretty good? I mean, it seems like we should be doing this. We'll know about that, but like, if, well, I mean, if we're expecting to get six inches of the snow overnight, it seems pretty salty to them. You know, for all of our kid, all the traffic's feeding into the buildings.
They have some capacity, we need some.
That would be something we should spend some money on to do, you know, ourselves and, you know, to.
Okay.
Saying it, I'm saying it, but thank you.
Bonnie, I'm just gonna say a comment, you guys gave me some, some uh people to pursue, I wrote, I wrote down, but we did have, we do have some toilets that are out, some sinks that are out, some drippy, drippy drip going on.
Is this after everything that just got done?
Yes, it is, it's usage, a lot of it, stopped up toilet uh here and there. It's a new flushing mechanism needs to be changed out, somebody opened junior high, um, you can kinda see that list, you click it. I walked um I walked the company through, you can kinda see who that was, um very expensive. Way more than what we need to be paying. We do have a few sinks that are shut down and a few toilets shut down, so we're gonna look for different, uh, I was thinking I'd get some other videos, but I had not gotten any. But I did get some leads from you guys, so we can move on from that, there's no action needed, I just wanted to make you aware of it, that we're, we're starting. If you hear from the community, oh, we got a, our bathroom's been shut down for three weeks, and probably has, and it could change out, because the flushing mechanism's not working, and it's not running anymore, generally.
All right, I'll make a motion, move to executive session pursuant to six point zero point zero to when we discuss uh votes, one, three, and thirteen, to the Board of Education, you know, J C Rich.
Second.
Motion by Bo, seconded by Clint. Bo?
Yes.
Diggs?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Miss Reed?
Yes.
Clint?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Myself, yes, uh.